You see use computer.
Want to mute it again. I don't see your volume.
Hearing them, I think. Can you guys hear us now?
Yep. Okay.
There you go.
So you got didn't have a an opinion?
No, but they're if they can hear now, we can let them speak to that.
Dave, can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'd I'd like to have is you not have a opinion one way or the other on this?
So let me know what this is. I guess they didn't hear the introduction.
We're we're talking about increasing the fines around Pineview and also Cozy parking fines.
So it'll be one fifty on the first offense and then three hundred on the subsequent ones. The fines will be doubled after fourteen days. If no actions taken.
So Paige, you can let me know if I'm wrong, but I don't think you dot has any opinion as far as fines.
Yeah, we don't get involved in that portion of this.
I guess I should ask, is there any objection to this?
Yeah. Now, just gonna be just it's gonna be all around like the roads and in the parking areas combined.
This is this should just be roads, right?
Roads. That's my understanding.
Yeah. For those parked in the no parking areas on the on the roads around pine here.
I can read what we drafted. The the way it's currently drafted to be proposed is. It shall apply on any highway or road where Weber County has parking enforcement authority. In the following two locations. The road to Cozy Reservoir and all roads branching off of it east of the entrance to the Weber Memorial Park Campground. And all locations within one quarter mile of the Pineview Reservoir High Water Mark. So within any of those areas, it's anywhere on a road that Weaver County has parking enforcement authority.
So my question for Joe then. Are they all properly signed? Because I know. If we get start giving tickets and we don't have signage in place.
Right.
Uh, it'll get tossed out real quick.
I can send our sign crew up and make sure that it is. Uh, last time I was up there, everything looked good to me. I know. Uh, if you're coming from Huntsville to the Maverick, we have a big signs. That says no parking for the next mile.
Right.
So is that?
Right.
We don't need the little ones. If we have that big one, right?
I mean, we'll have to see how that plays out in court, but I mean, it's signed.
Right.
I wonder about I wonder about um some signage, maybe not all the signs, but some signage. That indicates this new fee structure.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Because if you're if you're used to going up there and paying a thirty dollar ticket, sure, it's everybody in the car.
That was the problem people were doing that.
Well, it's it's cheap parking.
You you want me to get a sign built that has the new the new fees on it? You put it up? I mean, that's simple.
And maybe that says up to three hundred dollars or.
Okay. But oh, how do I write that? Parking fees start at one fifty up to three hundred or something.
You don't want too many words and they won't read it.
Yeah.
Cast one question on this is for you dot. Part of what we're talking about is on a state highway.
Right.
Do we? But we have enforcement authority on that state highway. Is that correct? So we would issue parking tickets on that state highway.
Yes.
Okay.
Like a yacht club, right?
Yeah, exactly. But the signage. Is that that would be you dots responsibility to put the signage on that road.
On the state porch.
Correct.
They would sign their roads, we would sign.
Right.
So I I guess you are we in? Do we agree that we have a parking issue and? Yeah, I think you already have no parking signs up there. Uh, where we would need them. I just want to make sure that we're coordinated on that, so.
And so as far as the no parking signs, that's why I invited Paige and Todd, uh, because they would need to be. The ones issuing the traffic order. Or a no parking science and and they have better. Idea of what's out there.
Okay.
Are there any plans to provide improved parking in different areas?
Yes, but they won't be happening soon, right? And I guess that's the real. Solution to all of this. You can raise the fines. People are still gonna park. They're gonna pay them. We're still gonna have a problem because it's record recreation draw that it has. So I think the overall picture should be. More parking, improve parking as we work to that. Cause it's the same with Snow Basin. We go up there, we told them, we cite them. And they still did it. Year after year.
I don't think we have an ETA on before service deciding when they're gonna do those improvements yet. And with the new administration and challenges with funding, I've heard about on other funding options. That may not get any better for a while.
Was that in regards to the marina?
Yeah, so we had we helped him with the design, Dave, to improve parking at. Well, a few different spots. There was Port Ramp, there's Pelican Beach, Spring Creek. That was about it and. It was kind of through the Good Neighbor Act, I believe is what they called that. We helped them facilitate the design, helped them get it going. They have the plans, they're they're shovel ready, uh, but I don't believe they've. Figured out the funding to do that. It's probably the last we heard on that. Does that sound right?
They were working on putting them out to bid. I think the port ramp area was the priority one. They have to wait for Ogden City's waterline to get built to do what they want without conflicting. So definitely not this year. Um, but I haven't heard about the bid process if that actually did get out, but they had they had some money to do that work.
To do for rest.
Yeah, just for Port Ramp was what I understood, maybe five million.
That's kind of what I've heard. The twenty five million disappeared.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the Ogden Waterline is under construction now and. I've approved the plans for the port ramp improvements, but I haven't heard when they're starting construction.
That's all that we know.
Yeah, we don't know any more than that, Dave.
Yeah. Cause I yeah, as you pointed out, a lot of the issues is. There needs to be some parking because there's a high demand and so. Although we don't want them parking in bad locations, we need to come up with a plan of good locations.
Right.
Todd, Paige, either of you have any other comments as far as signage and? Traffic orders and.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that the signs are in place so that we don't start taking people where they come back and. You know, I don't want to create a bigger problem than we have now. And if we start especially with a hundred and fifty or three hundred dollars. Uh, they're gonna, you know, there'll be people that'll fight at that for thirty bucks. They're gonna go away. But so I think this. Really lends itself to we need to come, you know, whether it's us, I guess, or the new city. Uh, need to come up with an alternative plan. If the Forest Service isn't gonna come through, which it appears they're not. I think we really need to look into some type of and maybe in conjunction with you dot some type of shuttle stream. Uh, off off site parking. I mean, the answer, we don't have parking there. We got to come up with parking somewhere else. If you look at what Powder Mountain does. They do a great job of shuttling. From in Eden, you know, twenty minutes they're up to the ski resort, so it can be done now. Again, maybe we get some support from the Forest Service. I don't. I think we need to look at that.
Yeah.
You know, the the vendor. I would think would, you know, be willing to should be willing to put some money in. Concession air.
Yeah.
To solve that problem. But I don't know, I'm just tossing that out and sharing.
Yep.
I mean, if if we're gonna look at it, we got to come up with an alternative. We're not gonna have additional parking. So the only option I see is to do off site. Or you're gonna continue. Yeah.
You're gonna continue.
I think Chief Guard's right. People people are gonna have continued. They want to get to the lake and they're, you know, they've got plans. They come up from Salt Lake or Davis County. They're gonna park there. They're not there, turn around and go home.
Right.
Yeah, right.
We know that.
And a lot of the people that we're seeing up there are not Weaver County residents.
No.
They're Salt Lake, Utah County.
Yeah.
Further south, so.
Abs- absolutely. So anyway.
Okay.
Is is this? I guess, how would you like to proceed? Is this something that we want to? Put off and and let the city deal with in the future? Is this something? I mean, because we're. We're coming up, we're three months away from Memorial Day.
Right.
When this would start. Uh, I guess Commissioners, where where are you at as far as wanting to? See this happen this year?
Chief, I'd like your opinion on that. Do you think it's worth worth these increases for one summer and then the new city? Takes this on? Or would you? You think we'll see much improvement?
I think it's worth having a bigger discussion on a solution rather than just fines, maybe. I mean, we can. Um, my deputies won't cite if. It's not properly signed.
Right.
Sure.
Because it's a waste of time for us in court if they can go back and. So the signage has got to be there uh, with the big sign and nothing else. I I don't know what a judge is gonna say to that, right? So.
So I I guess I'd have to get with you guys to tell me how to sign it properly. Like how far in the you put too many up, it looks like fence posts.
Right.
You could hang barbed wire on the mountain. Other because they're so and it's an ice ore. It don't look good.
And I don't think you need too many, but we would have to go up. And look at it and work with you and see.
Okay.
Maybe it's worth just pausing on this.
You know, I don't know if we'll if we'll be able to work out an offsite shuttle system in three weeks.
Right, right.
There's no way.
Right. We can try the fines and see if it works. Like I said, we'll we'll go up and cite. I don't know how big of a deterrent it's gonna be, but.
I mean, I guess we can. I guess we can adopt the new fine schedule.
Yeah.
Knowing that we're gonna proceed on looking at other alternatives. So I can hurt anything, right?
Uh, other than you may get more people that cite it.
Yeah, that's. And then they spend their time in court. Which is fine. That's what we get paid to do. I'd rather have you out there policing stuff with the reservoir for the lawbreaker.
Do you? Do you want me to order a small sign and put below our no parking the next mile sign? That has the fees on it.
The fees on it.
Yeah. What what give it? Well, how should I?
I don't know how to word that. You don't want to.
It might just be minimum fine a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that puts them on notice that the fine will be at least that much. It might wasn't on each end too.
Just on the big one that says no parking the next mile. Just put it on that one. Minimum fine one fifty to just make a little sign to put underneath it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That work. Yeah, there's I don't think there's. Any reason to hold off. It's. I mean, we're still looking for another solution.
I guess I just think on the messaging, we need to make it clear that. We are looking. I mean, I think if we just. Put the fines down. We're gonna be, you know, looked on as a county just after more revenue. I think if we say.
Put that out to the public.
I think we say, look, you know, the fines are going up, but. Part of that discussion is Chief Guard said has to be what's the alternative?
We can put that out to the public, maybe just a few weeks before Memorial Day.
What? Yeah, what's the hot like?
You know, Jessica.
Usually July, August.
Usually maybe.
So maybe just a couple of weeks before Memorial Day, Jessica can put something out. We'll put it in our newsletter.
Yeah.
We'll get it on the.
Too on our socials.
Yeah, on your social media and just. New fee schedule or fine schedule.
Big holiday weekends. We we have message boards, you know, we put up. Where thirty nine intersects it and.
Okay.
The holidays and those weekends are the, I mean, that's, those are the big ones.
Yeah.
I could put our big message boards and say just fines.
So that that covers our roads, Dave, if we do that on our road. That's probably gonna put a lot more pressure on your two roads that. Have shoulders people can pull off and access or has more phone.
Well, I think.
I think we police.
Deputy Guard said we police serve as well, so. We're not Indian on either of them.
Is there current signage that says what the fees are?
I don't think.
Because I would, I would be shocked that most people have any idea what the parking fine is.
Sure they don't.
I'm I'm, I'm not saying that you don't put a sign up, but I think the people that are driving in. Park there and have absolutely no idea if it's thirty, fifty, eighty, or one fifty now.
But if they pay thirty and they split it with the whole car, then they know they can come back.
If if they're.
Right. People to do that and pay the parking.
They'll pay, they'll pay the fine and then they'll know they can park there again, cause it's thirty bucks. So there probably are some.
Fifty currently, right? Um they're.
Fifty or thirty?
Thirty-five, isn't it?
Um it's. Fifty right now.
Fifty? Well, they'll know now, we have the signs. Yeah, I think Joe, that's a good idea, just a little sign below it.
You got it.
But Joe, I'd wait until, unless you say otherwise, wait until it's gone through the commission.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, cause it's not official until it's been through the county.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay.
You could, if you. Want. Advertise that it is coming up more for a discussion on your county mission agenda. And take public comment. Explain, but it would just show that.
Sure.
You're interested right now, you have to say about it. Does it have to go through two readings?
Maybe on the first reading, have a public commentary.
Advertise it.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that, let's do that, that's a good idea.
Have a public hearing on it, right?
On the first reading.
Did you? Yeah, I think we should, yeah.
One final question, who is the? White person here as far as which department is running this?
We we can run it, Sean will run it.
I never was and I'm still not.
If you, if you send it to us, we'll run it.
Okay.
We all have a good answer.
Never my idea to begin with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thanks everyone. Okay, we're on item five now, discussion regarding county subdivision ordinance amendment. Sean Wilkinson, Courtney Erickson. I don't see Scott Park, but now Jensen. Gary Myers and Rick Grover.
All right.
Sean?
Thank you.
First Scott, now we can start.
Now this got to here. So Commissioners, you have. All been briefed on this individually. Um this has to do with. The completion guarantees that we allow currently in our subdivision ordinance. So. Right now, we allow a cash escrow. And a letter of credit if the project is over a million dollars. Now, we've had a. A challenge to that. Uh and and someone is saying, we don't feel like you're complying with state code. Because state code says that the county has to provide two. Completion guaranteed points. And. If you're saying that we can't access one because our project is not over a million dollars. We don't feel like that complies. Uh now. We've talked to our attorneys, our attorneys. Tend to agree there is a question there. As to whether or not we're meeting the intent of the state code. So we want to look at the subdivision ordinance and how we can, what what type of completion guarantees we should have? How we can rectify. Uh the question that's out there about the letter of credit. Uh and and then change our code to make sure that we are in compliance with state code and that we're doing what is best for the county. So that's what the discussion is about today. So I did have Gary Myers reach out to uh several other cities and counties to see. What they accept for completion guarantee, so Gary, you wanna just talk through that?
Yeah, you bet, so I reached out to a lot of different individuals from different cities and other counties. Most of them, the general consensus is, most of them prefer a cash escrow bond similar to us. And they also allow letters of credit on smaller amounts, now typically we've reserved that letter of credit option for subdivisions. A million dollars or more. However, uh a lot of different cities and other agencies are allowing it on smaller, smaller subdivisions and they're okay with that. I did have some say they still use surety bonds. However, I had multiple people, even those that have said they use surety bonds, say those are challenging at best, if not even more frustrating beyond that. If we ever have to try to enforce those. It becomes kind of a legal action and becomes very timely and very. Cost with belabored, um. I also had them say they've used. Uh the actual deeds of the parcels and the subdivisions as. Collateral, so to speak, or had signed over to the city or the agency. And but those were also explained as they would, they regretted doing that and advised against doing that as well, so the general consensus did come back to. Essentially just an escrow, cash escrow or the letters of credit and they, I asked them specifically. I threw out a number of maybe five hundred thousand dollars on letters of credit if they'd had any issues and they said, no, just. The problem with letters of credit is you have to watch to pay attention to when that letter of credit expires. You have to set yourself reminders, reminders in the project tracking system so that you're on top of that, so you can. Holler in those assu- assurances if if the letter of credit is looking or getting close to expiration. But other than that, that was the general feedback, Sean, and most everybody's okay with letters of credit on smaller ones, but. They are a little bit trickier, just track them.
Okay.
Ask, yeah, what does smaller mean, cause like, i- if it's a fifteen hundred dollar escrow, I don't wanna let her credit and track that for fifteen hundred dollars.
They didn't define that small, Scott, but they did define down to three hundred thousand. Uh I think it's fairly common for us to see subdivisions in the three hundred to five hundred thousand dollar range. Uh. But we are seeing the subdivisions trend towards the larger amounts that are pushing up to. Just shy of a million dollars, so I think those would be good viable options for. Letters of credit if that's the decision and direction we choose to go.
Did any of the other institutions have? Qualifications or limitations regarding the lending institution?
They didn't. Say that, they, I did ask a few of them specifically and they said they've just kind of. Let. Looked at the banks on a case by case basis, is is kind of what they alluded to, so. Um I guess really if we're comfortable with that institution, um we could, we could move forward with it, but. Yeah, they didn't, they didn't really. Get into too much detail on that, Chris, and I maybe could have phrased the question a little better to ask that, but I could, if you'd like, I could pursue those options.
No, I mean, I think with just with our ordinance, we do have it within the discretion of the county treasurer to determine whether or not. That institution is worth dealing with financially safe. But I I would hope we would get to keep that.
Uh and I think our intent is to keep that language. If we can't. Keep the the dollar limit, then I think at least the financial institution, because that provides multiple. Banks or credit unions that they can go to to get a letter of credit, we're not. Putting a hard line. Um. But Courtland, based on what we've discussed. You feel like? That that limit of a million dollars. Might be problematic.
It might be because the way the state code is written, it doesn't clearly say that we can only. Allow one on smaller projects, but if it's a bigger project, you get two options.
Yeah.
I think that's a. Possible argument we could make and it might be okay, and I think back at the time we adopted that, I advised that. It was okay to try that and we could see what happened if we got challenged, at least.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't say we can't do that.
Right.
In the state code, but as somebody has pointed out. Courts may err on the side of the property owner or the developer in that situation, so. Um there is some risk there, I'm not saying we're out of compliance necessarily, but there is some risk that we might be found to be out of compliance if we were challenged.
Yeah.
To be fair to you, Courtland, uh they added, state added that in after we adopted the letter of credit rule. So we adopted letter of credit rule, it would be more flexible, cause it was cash only. Cash only at at one point, and then a year or two after we adopted that, the state. Required the jurisdictions to have more than one option.
Okay, and about time, we might have looked at our ordinance and said, okay, we got two options here, even though one doesn't apply all the time.
Yeah.
If I could, Sean?
Please.
The only thing I worry about with those those letter of credits is that they expire after two years, one year or two years, I can't, I can't think of any institution that I've seen that goes more than two years. And looking at the escrow balances we have on hand right now, we have six point eight million dollars, of which three point four million of that is over two years old. So we have cash escrows from prior to twenty fifteen. Um and so that is just gonna put more of a burden on engineering. Um and maybe the option while we don't like then signing the deed over to the county. Sign your deed, here's the two options, you sign your deed over to the county or you do a cash escrow, but because we're nice, we're going to. Let you also have a third option, which is a letter of credit escrow, and maybe we set that at three hundred thousand or five hundred thousand or something like that. Um so that we don't have to offer a a letter of credit to everybody. But you make it that the the best option is either cash or a letter of credit, I just, I just, cause I worry. You start to get fifty, sixty different letters of credits out there at once, and who's tracking that monitor and yet they're going to be expiring every month? And very rarely do we have a project that's all the way done. I mean, I'd say it's less than half of them that are all the way done, start to finish in two years.
So recently, this last year, we did call in on a letter of credit that was expiring. Uh as a result of that, we created an option in our tracking system for us to create reminders, because. There's no guarantee that the staff involved at the beginning, this subdivision are going to be here and employed at the same time as that letter of credit becoming expiring. So we created that option in front there to track that, to send notifications to the team following it. Um that gives it a lot more comfort. Comfort there, really, so to speak, in regards to that concern, Scott, um.
There's, there's two things to add to that, the uh our code was changed a couple of years back that said that. Uh improvements agreement cannot be longer than two years without an extension, and at the time the extension has to happen, we would ask for a letter of credit amendment. Um so hopefully, if we're sticking to that timeframe, then this wouldn't be as much of a risk, however. Like Gary said, we have to have that reminder, we, and I don't even know if our system is robust enough to make sure that that reminder is going to enough people. Um and that's one of the other issues with letters of credit is, they oftentimes they will send some kind of a notification of expiration, but if it doesn't go to the right people. Um somebody does get it, same problem with sureties, sureties are usually, they're like an insurance policy. Uh the jury company will send a cancellation of insurance policy as soon as the developer stops paying the premium. Um and so it's totally under the control of the developer uh for a a surety uh bond to expire essentially, and. They'll send us a notice, but if it doesn't go to the right person, we don't know. My recommendation, uh as far as the title goes, as far as deep in property goes. That will work as long as the property is valuable. But if the property has gone into foreclosure, the reason why the developer isn't finishing and doesn't care about their escrow or their letter of credit. Is because they're losing money on the property and then if we have that deed, then it's our burden, our problem to fix that. So I was talking to Sean a little bit, my suggestion would be to do a letter of credit. Only if the letter of credit is written the way that we want it to be written. In other words. It doesn't expire until after. Maybe the financial institution provides us notice and we've responded to that notice. Uh maybe it's six months in advance of expiration, they've sent us notice that it's going to expire and we've responded, something that gives us the trigger in the back and forth with the financial institution so that. We know it got to the right person. Um before it actually expires.
But we'd have to do that on everything, right, even if it's a fifteen hundred dollar?
Who would?
And and to your point about the lots being signed over to us, Scott, the the instant, the. Agency that did that was Logan City. And they. Strongly recommended not doing it because of the legal complexities that follow along.
But I don't wanna actually do it, sorry.
Would the lots actually be signed over to us or would it just be like recording a trust note?
Were the, they they set it up so that they were first place on a, on a.
To be like, almost like a person, a lien.
Like a lien, that's exactly right, and so so no transaction could happen unless that. First place note was was paid off and so.
And and my intention wasn't to have that be the default option, cause I think you're right, I agree, that would be a headache.
Yeah.
But it's basically, we have two options as the state code requires, option one is cash, option two is a first place lien. And option three is if you're over X number of dollars. You can use a letter of credit, that way it drives most people to either the letter of credit or to the cash bond. But then we can still set that threshold, so we're not getting a fifteen hundred dollar letter of credit or a seven hundred and fifty dollar letter of credit. And and I don't know whether, maybe millions too high, but it's three hundred thousand low enough. Is it a hundred thousand dollars, I just was trying to figure out, there's some way we can do this, so we don't have a whole bunch of. Small dollar letter of credits.
Yeah, good question.
Cause I know he's gonna wanna have their lien, like a lien put on their property, fifteen hundred bucks, they're just gonna come put in the cash bond, but if you can go get a credit, you you know what I mean? So I I I don't know, I don't know what the, I mean, that'll be a policy decision, I'm just trying to figure out how to manage the risk and make it easier, so we don't lose these.
Linel, do you have comments?
Well, no, I mean, I was kinda thinking the same thing as Scott, we need to have a second option here. Um but did you guys find there was? Um, but did you guys find there was a problem with that million dollar limit? I mean, are you running into problems with the developers? I'm, I mean, taking off that we need to, would you lower it now that you've had experience with it before?
Um, they, they have worked pretty well, uh.
Until two thousand eight.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I wasn't here for that, so I can.
That was the reason we got rid of the letters of credit. Because in two thousand eight, we did lose two. Letters of credit that when the banks went out, they, the banks went under and we lost. On those developments, so that hurts, so we removed that option. Um, but then we put it back in. Get the request of a developer, we were working together and that's where the million dollar. Limit came from and then the state. Put in the.
I mean, there's more skin in the game when you've got their cash out there, they think there's motivation, but then to Scott's point. How do you guarantee that, like, what do we do with that cash now?
Yep.
You know, we were talking, does that go to unclaimed property? Cause Cortland doesn't feel like it's something we can, you know, maybe in the policy it needs to state what happens to that cash. If it doesn't, because you know, Scott says there's, um, maybe somebody's got twenty thousand in escrow, but three hundred thousand to do the repairs. You know, we don't want to do that. So what happens with that cash? It's just sitting on the books with nowhere to go.
Mm-hmm.
And you've got bankrupt businesses that you can't, so does that need to be addressed in this policy as well? What do we do with the cash if they don't? But seems like cash is the preferred way. Now, can they do it or not? Are you finding that developers can't do the cash option?
I think most of them do the cash, right?
Yeah. I've seen now, most of them do the cash, but that's mostly been because of the policy we have, where we've been upfront with them and said unless you're. North of a million, that's really your only option at this point.
Is there any way to write the letter, not the letter of credit, but the subdivision improvement agreement? Where if the cash at the time that it, uh, comes due is insufficient to cover the improvements. That there's some kind of hook to put the developer on, that they're going to be obligated for any outstanding balance beyond whatever that amount is that's on deposit.
I think we have that in our code. I think it's in the code, um, to some degree, and I think we can give that and it'd be really hard. The, the challenge is by the time a big project, uh, goes south. The LLCs go, the developers go.
Sure.
Yeah.
So there's not a lot of enforcement. Unless it's with the main specifically.
Well, I might.
Yes, please.
So, you know, I've reviewed this with Sean and Cortland prior to, I, I don't think there's any question, we're in a gray area. As per state code, uh, I don't think it's worth taking it to court. Cause I think more than likely we would probably lose, especially they're gonna, a judge typically would take the private property right position. Um, I don't see any problem with a letter of credit, especially if it's a letter of credit that. We direct to be taken to a financial institution that we approve. Not just any, you know, so I think we have to have control over the financial institution. I do think there has to be, whether it's three hundred or five hundred thousand. Um, there's no sense in somebody doing a letter of credit for, you know, four thousand or even. You know, even fifty thousand, hundred thousand, so I think that should be set high enough. But I think you have to have the two options for cash. Um, up to three hundred or whatever it is, and then, uh, letter of credit after that. But subject to financial institution approval by the county and. Subject to, and I, I think again, it, unfortunately, that's our business, it's gonna be up to engineering to track those. And I don't know how you do it, but if it slips through the crack, then that's our, that's our fault. So we, we can't let those slip through the crack and, and maybe you do that with language. In the letter of credit directed to the bank that they give us notice, you know, six months prior, but at the end of the day. It's our fault if we miss it. So you're gonna have to come up with a solution. Red flag it or, you know, make yourself a note, put it on the wall, uh, with a sticky note. This is the date, we gotta check this, so. But I'm just saying, we can't. We can't take the risk because we missed the boat. Uh, take all our, take all possible action. And, but I don't see, we're not back in a two thousand eight economic environment.
Right.
Um, at the same time, I think we should have the ability to approve or disapprove a financial institution. So.
With. With the, the limit, the three hundred or five hundred thousand or under that. Are we gonna find ourselves in the same boat if we put a, a smaller limit on the amount?
If we don't have a third option. We might, but I guess the question there would be, are people likely to challenge it? Are we going to get developers who? Who's infrastructure that they need to install is a hundred and fifty thousand. Who insist on doing a letter of credit instead of a cash escrow or are we not likely to get challenged on that?
So D R Horton, I'm, I'm just gonna put them out there, they have a sidewalk project. How much is that? I don't know. I mean, that's a, that's gonna be a question.
I'd have to pull it up and look at it. I don't recall exactly the amount, how much their sidewalk portion is. How do you, how do you define that? That's the challenge. Where do you, where do you draw the line? Because I mean, we can draw that line wherever we want, but. If they're gonna.
If you have any line in there, then you have, you don't have two options.
And so we're in that same situation legally, but the question is, are we going to get challenged? Or is it going to be more of a hassle for the developer to try to go get the letter of credit for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project? And just to put the cash up? I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, we're, we're kind of just switching the scenario, we're still only have, I'm not in favor of. You know, taking property. Again, I think that just, maybe that's a third option, but if you look. You know, if you look at the mechanics of the deed, we, you know, we're gonna be in a position, we, you know, if we, we take first position. We say, okay, we'll take property, but we gotta be in first position. Most developers are gonna go, I've already given, they're gonna put that. Land up as security for their development. So if we take it, we're gonna be behind probably one or two other institutions, which means now we're obligated to pay those, if we want to take any. Of that land, we pay them off. So, I, to me, that's not a realistic option. Probably why your cities learned that after they had to pay off several million in loans for developers, didn't work out for them.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a third option, I, I wouldn't advise we do it.
Is the surety bond a third option? And is it, is it the worst of the three for a developer? They would go down that road if they had no other option, but at least it's the second option that they.
Yeah, a surety bond would be my preference over taking title and I understand. But any commercial project you work with the government, I know, you put, you put forth a surety bond now. Again, is that the, you know, a hundred percent guaranteed? No, but it is a third option.
Yeah.
And I guess we could do the same thing with the surety, with the bond, we could say, look, we'll accept. Surety from certain groups that, you know, cer- certain institutions. Cause there's good bond, like everything else, there's good bonds out there and there's bad bonds. Or not, I shouldn't say bad, but not as, uh, not as financially feasible.
We require double coverage, surety and a letter of escrow. I mean, I, probably a little more expensive, but it's. Second option. If one fails, the other one performs, vice versa, kind of like double coverage of insurance.
Is it a limitation on the financial amount you can actually collect, like a hundred and ten percent? Can you go above that?
Well, it, for which?
The improvements.
Oh, yeah, 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 a hundred and ten percent, sorry. I thought you were asking a different question.
There's a hundred percent, but you can retain ten percent.
It's, uh, we hold a hundred and ten, we retain ten for the warranty period.
But you can't by, is by, is it limited by state law that you can't go above that?
Yes, unless we use our development agreements to change that, we could do that through development agreement. Uh, that question I thought you were asking, which is something that should be on the table, is, um, how much are letters of credit or even surety bonds? Um, protected under F E I C and there are limitations there as well. That's, that's why we shied away from them in two thousand eight when things went south. They just didn't have the federal protection.
Yeah, no, makes sense.
We have smaller amounts, we could have the cash escrow and surety bonds, and then when we get up to. Three hundred thousand or whatever that amount is, we don't allow surety bonds and we just allow escrow. Cash escrows or letter of credits after that.
As long as there's the two options, yeah.
Yeah. I have seen problems with surety bonds quite a bit, that's a concern.
Yeah.
That makes sense, is that you have, you have two options on both ends.
Yeah. Are developers likely, uh, and again, I don't know the developer world and the financial institution world. Are they likely to go out and try to get a surety bond instead of a cash escrow or would they prefer to do a cash escrow?
Depends on where the interest is going. Cause like, surety's, it's basically a insurance premium that they're paying. Um, as opposed to cash escrow. They're losing whatever that interest is, so long as we're holding it, um, out of their accounts. How to answer the question, the way that you're asking.
So the question would be, is, is the insurance premium higher than the interest that earning in the bank? If the, the insurance premium is higher than the, it. Pay the cash escrow, if they can make more money, if the premium's cheap, then they would pay the premium. Cause we don't give them interest, so if they give me a million dollars and I hold it for a year, I keep the interest, I don't give them any.
Yeah, that's what, that's exactly what they'll do, whatever the premium is on that bond.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if premiums, whether they have any more expensive interest, I, I don't know, I think in their savings account either, probably not very much.
Right.
Isn't there a second option already inherent in this where maybe it's just not recognized under state code, but. They don't have to put up the bond, they can just do the improvements themselves.
That is, that is recognized as state code. We have, we have to allow them to do improvements in lieu of a financial guarantee. We just don't record the plat until after, uh, those improvements are done. Or we have to give them two financial assurance options.
Is that the option that you have that? Um, below a certain financial amount, we recognize and will record against the property that. You're not gonna get any building permit or any movement forward with this until such and such is done?
The second option, I, I think we already have that ability right now.
But that, would that be recognized as fulfilling that second option requirement?
I don't know. My, my guess is probably not because we already have that ability. But that's a good question.
Well, I mean, we did it with the Meadows, but that is just cause it was.
And it does say you should be able to release part of it. If part of it's done, so then it would take redoing the letter of credit or giving part of that escrow back. If they can.
This may be. Could be a dumb question, but we take the cash escrow. Or could we say instead of letter of credit, you can set up, um, cash escrow with your own bank and you can. Keep the interest on that, but they're basically still putting up cash.
That's what a letter of credit is basically.
But the letter of credit, they don't actually invest their money in their pay interest, you know, they're just, they're, they're basically giving out a credit card. It's, then they'll pay a fee for that, but they keep all their money and their interest, right?
It, it's both, so some financial institutions will do a letter of credit because you have that money in the bank. Um, others will do a letter of credit as if it's an advanced line of credit or some sort. Uh, it's a good question, what if we gave them their interest back?
We don't want to.
Okay.
We, we're not set up to, to calculate the interest on those, um, it would be, we would have to acquire a new system to track that and. And then, I don't know, I, I think we want to keep the interest.
Yeah, takes time to, you know, keep all those records.
Yeah.
So, time and money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So where are we?
Yeah, it's, it's just the, I, the only thing I worry about is the risk because, and, and Chad and I, every year we deal with this. We're, we're looking at all the different escrows that have been coming in.
Yep.
And it's usually the hard ones because this person went bankrupt and was bought out by this person, went bankrupt, was bought out by this one and. Now we've got sixty thousand dollars that I've been trying to give back for. Almost ten years now to somebody, anybody who will just take this money and we can't figure out who to get it to or what improvements need to be done or.
Are you looking for volunteers?
Well, someone that Corlin will let me write a check to. I told him I'd just take it and scoop it into the, the county's general fund, he said, no.
What does code say for that? I thought it had to go into the state. For unclaimed, if it's unclaimed and we can't use it.
That is the most likely.
So it has to go to the state.
But we still, so for example, we have improvements a- around a building. Well, the building's been torn down and it has been rebuilt, so. Or, but if another developer comes in there and builds that building, we can use that money, we have to help them do those improvements. But if nobody comes in to build a building, then we just hold that money forever and now that twenty thousand dollars, it's gonna cost us three hundred thousand dollars to do it. So, we, we've got a bunch of different scenarios like that, but they're usually not easy. If they're easy, we've kind of already taken care of them. It's the tough ones that are the ones that left.
So if a project, they go bankrupt or switches and they have unfinished improvements. We can take, there's no question, we can take that money and put toward the unfinished.
But if the project never got off the ground enough to, let, let's do powder, we talked, powder rich condos. Right. Buildings halfway, they tore them down, there's nothing to improve.
Okay.
So what do we do with that money?
Hmm, so does that require a change in state code to clarify that? Or can we change it by ordinance?
Or is it in there?
Well, I think that's a situation where we would look for whoever the original developer is or their successor. And if we can't find them, send it to the unclaimed property, that is, wash our hands of it.
Can we write our own recourse in our ordinance? I mean, would that trump whatever other obscure ideas are out there? If we say if we're holding that money for more than five years and no one's claiming it, goes in the general fund or. Goes into the roads department to, you know, budget or it goes.
Cause it is a breach of contract. I mean, part of the problem that we're having with the Meadows and the other Cherokee one is that. Brad could completely build a different system, so even if he breaches it, we can't do anything with it.
Right.
And so maybe a contractual provision, but they'd agree that you relinquish that money, even if the development doesn't go through to the county.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, contract provision could do that.
And we could do that going forward, right? And I think we, since, was it twenty sixteen or twenty eighteen when we made changes? We've, we've been a lot better at those contracts since then, it's just these older ones that are outstanding, so that, that's just the concern is. We, we have a lot of prior history, um, from before, before I was here, that we're still trying to figure out.
We try to be as proactive as we can because the problem we have, we know that money is in, always going to be a deficit. So the longer we wait, the more short we're gonna be to finish those improvements, so. We're, like Scott says, we're, we're pretty proactive on trying to get those. You know, subdivisions finalized and complete, so. I don't think that's the issue here, it's more.
No, yeah, this is a second option, yeah. It's a secondary conversation, it's just, it's the risk and why we're bringing it up, we just wanna make sure that whatever we do here is not. Going to cause us problems five, ten years down the road. Yeah, I get that.
Or is there any way that the policy could say, I mean, say we kept it the exact same. But the commissioners have the ability to override it. Like if you decided somebody's calling you on it and says, we're gonna say, no. We don't think you need state code, we're gonna sue you. And you decide, okay, we'll let these guys through, just like this T R Horton. I don't know if that's good policy or not, but. I mean, do we keep it the same? Cause we're worried and we've never had anybody really challenge it. Now, these guys are a big national company and they know they have some ability to do that. Do we do that in our own policy? You know, the policy still states these are what our options are, but. This night in this case, we will allow you to do a cash, you know, or we'll allow you to do a letter of credit.
Right, we, we have two options in our code right now, they just need to put more expensive improvements in and they can qualify for it.
I would prefer not to like that and have an exemption every time, but. That's, that's.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Gets to that point.
Yeah.
I'd like to be fairly transparent and clear for the future. Though I, I don't disagree, it's, you know, we may be spending a lot of time on something that may not ever come about. Um, but.
You just had that third option. Is there other, any other third option that would? Make these two the most enticing, I guess. The third one's there just to keep us in compliance, you know? I don't know what that would be.
Well, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Ford, like if we said, okay, you can put us first place on a lien, essentially on your property, that would be the third option, but I. I don't ever want anybody to actually use that.
We don't want that.
Yeah, so why do we offer this? You bet, yeah.
Let me, let me throw this out there and you guys tell me if I'm stupid. But could we have, could we do a, we have a cash escrow here, but they could go do a cash bond somewhere else. But in our improvement agreement, we have a bond certificate or whatever we wanna call it. That says at the end of this two years, that money, whatever's left in there is released back to Weaver County. And then we hold it as an escrow and then we release it. Could we do that? That way.
That's what we're supposed to be doing now.
We have.
Our code does provide for that.
But they, the, the institution has to send it to us with a letter of credit.
Automatically.
Automatically. At, at this expiration date.
Without calling it in.
Without calling it in, they automatically have to send that back to the county.
I feel like when we first started talking about letter of credit, I think this was with, uh, John Lewis, or maybe some modifications to letter of credit with John Lewis's. I think that was drafted, so I think we might have some language to extend.
Okay.
Where it does trigger an automatic revision of that money to the county as opposed to it just expired.
Yeah, and, and it's just based. Yeah, and, and it's just based on the timing, that, that two-year timeframe. At the end of two years, the money is sent back to Weaver County if there's any left. Hopefully the development is done, but if it's not, that company has to send it back to us and then we work with the developer from there. Or that's just our money based on just what you guys have.
So let me make sure I understand. So you're saying it'd be a cash escrow held by a third party.
Correct.
So Bank of Utah verifies they've got X hundred thousand dollars in there with the two-year requirement that, that whatever's left over after two years comes back to the county.
Right. I don't know if that's different enough or if that, they would just say that's cash one way. It's cash to you or it's cash to them.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We could always say a letter of credit shall never expire. I don't know a lot of financial. Still second option.
That starts the, the process of collecting on that by sending notice. To have the financial institutions, instead of having the obligation, we're going to have the financial institution send it to the individual who took out the letter of credit. Say you're in violation of this. If you don't take certain action or we get received word from the county within fifteen or thirty days or whatever terms we come up with with the agreement of the financial institution, that is automatically going to revert to the county instead of us having to take affirmative action.
Right now, our code says the letter of credit shall be on a form as approved by the county treasurer and county attorney's office.
It just depends on which lending institutions will, will choose to abide by that.
Right.
It depends on the.
That's the question. And maybe we work with our lending institutions or we work with local lending institutions to figure out a way that works best for them that provides optimal support for us. Figure out how to write that letter of credit and then it limits, the limit lending institutions to the ones that we've already approved.
Well, then you can reduce the amount of from five hundred thousand down to any amount, as long as it's not an administrative burden for the county to take care of. That it puts the onus on the lending institution and the actual developer.
Yeah.
But it seems like that's still the same thing as limiting the cash amount. If you say you can only go through these institutions.
It does seem like that.
Kind of the same thing as not having an option for somebody that
Yeah.
doesn't have a relationship with those.
But there still is two options. You've removed the dollar amount, but you've done the, the cash amount and you've got the lending institution. And I don't see how it's our problem if the developer doesn't have a good enough relationship to financially qualify with that lending institution to be able to secure that agreement. I mean, there's just certain banks we won't deal with. I don't think anyone would push back on us. It's still two options. You just might not be in a financial or you have good enough business reputation to exercise both options.
And they have the one, they have the one option, which I think is the point of requiring two options, right? So that if one doesn't work for you. There's the other one.
So if you can get cash somewhere else, like you're blowing shark or whatever, you like go get it and then deposit it with the county.
What do you think, Corlin?
Well, what I really think is if we could tighten up the letter of credit options somehow in this way that's been discussed so that it would be less risky for the county. I would like to see just the letter of credit and the cash escrow being the two options.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
And that seems to be the best two options from what I'm hearing from
Yeah.
others' experiences and what you're saying.
So, but are you saying somehow still have a threshold in there on the letter of credit? You're saying even if I had a five dollar escrow, I could still go get a letter of credit for five dollars?
If, if the county were protected adequately, whether it's our own internal tracking system or whatever it is. Cause the way it is now, if we're tracking it correctly, Gary just has to present something to the financial institution saying they're in default, give us the money and they have to give us the money and then we hold it at that point. So it theoretically does protect us.
So Gary would just put in there basically an automated reminders, we call every letter of credit three months before it expires. We just call every letter of credit, everything that's out there unless it's already finished.
We would probably want to write the agreements in a way that makes it clear that that's what we're going to do. And maybe that means adjusting some of the timelines or something. So we make sure the letter of credit expiration is yeah, three months later than the date that we are going to call the funds if the improvements have been completed.
Is there a reason we wouldn't just do what Sean suggested and, and write it so that the bank automatically sends it to us at that three-month mark?
If they're willing to do that, then I think that's even better. I don't know if the national institutions would take on that responsibility, because I think the way and I could be totally wrong here, but my understanding is that financial institutions don't necessarily want to be the ones to track that and have that obligation, but maybe they are okay with it.
I mean, I, I don't know. I've never had any experience asking the bank, but I know that right now the banks require us to send Gary to sign a letter saying they're in default. That's all they really require.
Yeah.
And then we draw on that letter of credit. I think that's the standard industry.
I agree.
I, I mean, that is, we couldn't do it, but I think it would be a lot easier if we just, okay, we've programmed frontier. It's three months before the expiration date. And here's the email that Gary gets notified that you need to print this out and send it in to the developer and call the entire letter of credit. And then the developer gets really mad because they've been working with us and there's all these reasons why it didn't come in, but we don't care because the letter of credit's going to expire and we're not going to take the risk.
It's kind of how it went last year.
We should probably set frontier up to paying more than Gary, paying attorney's office, Lionel, commissioner, chair. Uh, just make sure everybody's got eyes on. Just in case Gary dies in an accident.
Are there escrow agencies that do stuff like this? Cause I know you can set up like with a private mortgage between two private individuals, you can have an escrow agency collect and transfer that. And so maybe we just put all these letters of credit in some type of, you know, company that it's a, a, a fee that we're willing to, to eat or it's a, it's a good investment for us where we don't even have to track it, where they're the ones taking care of it.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you do that all the time with, you know, uh, between private owners when they set up a contract to sell between homes. Those with an escrow payments go this. At the end, you know, there's a, if there's a due on sale or any other provisions in there, it's up to the escrow company. Based on the, you know, the escrow instructions, here's what you do. So that's, you know, that gets it out of your ballpark. Now.
Yeah.
How many do we have in a year?
How many escrows?
But how many are, I don't have any.
Like how many do you open up in a year?
Fifteen or twenty or so.
Fifteen to twenty a year we add to it?
Yeah, I mean, I'll count.
But it takes a lot, that would take the liability away from the county and put it on that escrow company if, if they missed a date or.
Well, and, yeah, and we could have in the letter of credit that the developer pays any fees associated with having to put it in escrow.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you'd want to do.
We've got two hundred and tens right now.
Yeah, there's, you know, most of the major title companies have an escrow division.
So is that something we want to explore? So I guess the two things is one, we've got the one developer right now requesting a letter of credit. Maybe we just approve an exception as we move forward. So this one can do a letter of credit.
Yeah.
In the meantime, give us a little more time. Let's see if we can get a national company. I would love to be able to say go get an escrow with this. Here's the two options, cash bond or you go to this specific branch or entity that we've did a procurement with and you get an escrow through them or, or however you want to do it with them.
Yeah.
Now, the escrow through them isn't the developer's putting cash into.
Or a letter of credit.
The whole, the letter of credit of the escrow company.
Yeah.
When it comes to a letter of credit, the code requires us to do um incremental releases based off of completed systems. Um, if it, if it's just a thing saying you have this letter of credit, does the incremental releases even matter at that point? I don't understand how, if I have a twenty thousand dollar credit card and I slowly get, you know, to a point that I don't have that much debt obligation, does it matter?
Well, I think the reason why you're doing that is so that the, the developer can continue to, like they maybe have five million dollar letter of credit with this institution. They've got tied up on all these different individual letters of credit. They want this released because they're starting on the next project.
Got it.
So they're going to want their obligation released.
Got it.
But that, if that's, I, I mean, I don't know if an escrow company does that or not. I mean, we would have to do some inquiry to see. And maybe Gary, you'd have to do some inquiry to see if there's even a company that offers that service.
Have you worked with them before?
Mm-hmm.
For sure. Yeah.
Yeah. Do they do it for commercials?
Oh, yeah.
Sure. So maybe we.
And keep in mind, the escrow companies, even though they're kind of a separate part of the title business, all the major underwriters. If so, if, let's say, uh, Republic Mortgage, Republic Title has an escrow. Uh, even though the title competition tried to divest from the escrow, state law didn't allow them to do that. So if there's a default in that escrow, the title company, which, you know, billion-dollar companies have to take responsibility for that escrow. Now, so, now that's state law today. The title companies continue to try to say, that's a separate company. That's not ours because they didn't want the liability. But right now it's, they have to do it. Hmm, so there's quite a bit of, um, you know, benefit for the county. Look at that because you've got a billion-dollar company that's going to come to the table if that escrow company makes a mistake. So, yeah, but most of, I mean, the ones I've dealt with, they're, they give you, you know, they can give you a monthly report. Uh, they're, I mean, that's what they do. That's their, that's their charge is to track what came in, what goes out, where it went and track it.
One thing to take note of the um draft development agreement or the template development agreement that we're working on um getting finalized. It does have a provision that says, if they get a rezone and they have a development agreement, they will comply with whatever our um escrow or whatever our financial completion um requirements are right now. So if somebody were to sign that with a rezone, they would be obligated to what our current code says. Face, basically to follow appearing, but if they're under a million bucks, then they would have to do escrow. So we could even continue going down that vein for new rezones and then just have these other options open for old rezones or other developments that aren't subject to a development agreement. You guys are okay with that?
Yeah. Well, I don't see anything wrong with saying, here's the option. You go to this escrow company. Again, we approve X number of escrow companies that, that have meet uh treasurer's recommendation. Uh, here's what we want to see in those escrow instructions. They come back with those escrow instructions to planning, to legal, that we approve or don't approve. Uh, that just becomes part of the, of the development agreement.
Yeah.
And then you approve the escrow agreement at the same time or uh prior to the development.
Yeah, excellent.
But it's all part, it's all tied together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah, like that, I like that. But uh for this one, are you okay with the exception for this one?
I just think we don't.
Because we're working on it. I think it's okay to say we're gonna, we're gonna allow this exception because
Yeah.
we're working on a change.
It's, it's not worth the fight. I think we just give the exception and but, but it brings up this discussion for the future, especially these escrows and let's get them out of our hair.
I get, I, I would love to just say you have.
Okay.
And even if they give us a cash bond, then we just send it over to the escrow agent, right? Cause they have two options, but we, doesn't mean we have to keep it in our, our hands. I'd love to do that because that's a lot, I mean, I don't know if that would, we'd want to talk to the mechanics of that, but at least for my part, that would be great. I'd love to get rid of that.
I think whatever we do, we should probably have a couple of developers at the table. Because especially the big developers, if we do something that's not favorable to them, they'll just ask the legislature to change it again. We, then we're back at the table again.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, are we clear? Are we clear?
Rick and Gary, can you guys work with your staff and with Corlin to oweless this idea that we've discussed today and then we can come back and report?
Yeah, and you might want to call in a couple of escrow companies just to say, okay, this is what, you know.
The direction we're having.
This is the direction. Give us your thoughts as far as, you know, are you okay with this? And I'm sure they would be because they're getting paid to do it.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Like some of you are sticking around. How there might be out there. And was that recording the whole time or did you stop it?
I'm just going to start it again so.
Thank you. So we have a.
We're going into closed session again?
Yeah, look for motion.
Okay, motion to go into closed session again.
Second. Second.
Hi.